Good evening and welcome to a special school board meeting for independent school district 833. Today is Thursday, December 17th, 2020 at 5:30 PM and we are meeting via teleconference. 2.0 is roll call.
Melinda Dolez.
Here.
Simi Petnek will be joining shortly. Louise Heinz.
Here.
Pat Driscoll should be joining shortly. Sharon Van Leer.
Okay, here.
Katie Schwartz will be joining shortly. And Tracy Burnett.
Here. It looks like we've got Simi on now. All right, 3.0 is the approval of our agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
The move by Louise and second by Sharon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 4.0 are discussion items and 4.1 is the discussion of.
Tracy.
Yeah.
Because it's virtual, we have to do a roll call for the approval of the agenda.
Yep, that is correct. Okay, sorry, roll call vote.
Melinda Dolez.
Yes.
Simi Petnek.
Yes.
Louise Heinz.
Yes.
Pat Driscoll is absent. Sharon Van Leer.
Yes.
Katie Schwartz is absent. Tracy Burnett.
Yes. Thanks, it's been awhile.
Thank you.
Sorry, so 4.0 discussion items. 4.1 is the discussion of our district refresh messaging focus group and our director of communications, Pepe Barton, will be presenting.
Here Burnett, school board superintendent Nielsen, thank you for joining us tonight. The purpose tonight is to get your feedback on initial district messaging. And so I'm going to go ahead and share a the presentation that we'll go through before we sorry, I'm just trying to click my button here. So the school board, we wanted to get your feedback. You'll remember back in August, you approved our ability to begin looking at how we talk about the district and, you know, creating messaging and an overall look and feel that our community can get behind, including all of our stakeholders, families, staff and students. And so since then, we've been going out with and looking for gathering input and feedback and creating a system to gather that input from our families, staff and students. And so we started with a district refresh team. Those are representatives for communications, human resources, community education and technology. And we're looking at the input we're gathering and providing additional input and synthesizing all of the information that we're learning. So we've had so far multiple focus groups with our staff and that was district leaders, department leaders and principals. And we also wanted to make sure we have that student voice. And so our focus group with students was through the superintendent student advisory and they provides provided some great insights into our discussions, which I'll touch on shortly. We also had a recent survey that went to separately families, staff and students. And as you can see, really good responses, more than 2,200 families responded to three questions I'm about to show you, 390 staff and nearly 2,000 students. And so in that survey, there was variations of the three questions below. The first one was when referring to the school district, which name do you most often use? What are the top three reasons you are proud to have your child attend our schools? Obviously, that was changed up for our staff in what they're proud about in working in our schools and of course, why students are proud to attend our schools. And then the third question, what three words would you use to describe our school district? And that's what I'm going to show you today. The, in this word cloud you'll see here, this is the, all the words that our families use in what three words would you use to describe our school district? You can see there's lots of positives from helpful and caring and supportive, dedicated. There's also good and great in there. And so there's communicative and there's some smaller ones as well. For the students, there was fun, good, helpful, fun, nice and caring. And so of course their vocabulary is a little different, but these are overall positive as well. There, you know, there's of course a couple of borings in there and things like that, but that's what students do and those are some smaller words there, so not used as frequently. Whoops. And then this is our staff and you'll see here, in the middle, we see large and variations of big and large. And so those were the most used words for our staff. So when we're talking about how do we, how would we describe our district? Large and big is not really something that we can promote as a district. When we're thinking about promoting and marketing our district to students and families, prospective families and, you know, new families moving into our district. So the big question and challenge we have is how do we expand our vocabulary ourselves, especially for staff, so that we can promote and talk about our district in a more, in a way that's more inclusive and resonates with people? And we're not able to do that if our staff largely think we're just big and large. So our challenge is to expand that vocabulary. And what we've learned so far in gathering feedback, we know perception is reality. And so as you saw in the feedback in those word clouds, we need to do a lot more in having messaging that resonates with people. Now that first bullet above the line is not tied to our feedback, but tied to what we're seeing with COVID-19. We know that families have choices. We are, with us being down 500 students, they are making other choices. So that's, you know, millions of dollars. And so we need to year round have to market and promote our school district, not just to new kindergarteners, but to all grades and all people as if they're prospective families. Because sure, the families may be holding their kindergartners back this year due to COVID-19 and we hope that they'll be coming back next school year, but that's not a guarantee. So we need to be able to make sure that we can talk positively with succinct messaging year round, so everyone can see themselves in our district, no matter what the situation is. And so we need to have some memorable and meaningful messaging. As you saw in those word clouds, we don't really have that currently. We don't want people to describe South Washington County schools as big. We want them to describe with our school district with feeling and emotion and what ties everyone back to it. One of our challenges that we do have in what we've discovered is no one knows really where we are. So I know when I started and maybe especially new board members have experience with this. When you are saying you're a board member for South Washington County schools, do you likely have to follow it up with in Woodbury and Cottage Grove area? So one of our challenges is for people to know where we are and not needing those follow-up questions. And so that's a challenge. We don't know if we'll solve it, but that's a challenge that we have in mind and something we've really heard from people. Now, in a positive light, racial equity has been the center of discussion across all of our stakeholders. Not only in our system leaders and department leaders, and that includes principals, assistant principals, our department heads. It wasn't just a focus there. We really heard it directly from our students and in some ways unsolicited. And they had really good thoughts about racial equity in our schools. And that's been a consistent focus in the groups that we've talked to. Now, we've also learned our current tagline or slogan, igniting a passion for lifelong learning does not resonate with people. I think there was, I think it lacked emotion in or feeling for the district. And so I think it was loud and clear that people didn't like it. I can't recall specific reasons why. But that was one of the things we really heard in several of our groups. We also know family, staff and students are really passionate about their school. In our, one of our questions above, and we don't, we're not showing in those individual things because of that data, because it was a summary question, but we really do see they're passionate about their school. They love their teachers, they love their principal and they're really supportive of the school that their kids go to. And so that comes out in our, in that survey question that we had. Now, what the feedback also revealed is that it has only amplified our core values of collaboration, relationships, equity, continuous improvement and integrity. So we believe these are one of, are still going to be central to whatever messaging we have in the district. And we will continue to promote these core values with the feedback that we've received because they all still apply. And so I think that points to something we've did good and the board has reviewed, I believe, for the strategic plan that our core values mean something to our community. And so what we do through our new messaging, these will only be amplified moving forward. And so some of our goals in this process is to have memorable and meaningful messaging that resonates with everyone. We want everyone to be able to see themselves in our district. And this isn't just messaging or branding that only applies to students. This is something that all of our staff should be able to see themselves in and all of our families and our community. And we want to be able to market and promote South Washington schools as one community. One of the challenges is that we want to remove the perceptions of Woodbury and Cottage Grove school districts or even in our own staff discussions about north schools or south schools when referring to work in our long-range facilities planning. We want to remove those things and really talk about ourselves as one school district. We'll evaluate whether the mission statement needs revised. I believe that's currently a form of igniting a passion for lifelong learning. And we want to be able to set up our schools and departments to be ready to have easy ways to promote their school through an engaging and customizable school marketing toolkit. I think there's currently lots of different variations of, you know, letterheads and things like that. So we want to provide one source for everyone in the district to have those customizable things for their departments and schools. We want to modernize our branding for our equally modern school buildings, especially as we look forward to potential long-range facilities planning returning once we're through the COVID crisis. There will be construction, there will be upgrades to our schools and we want to make sure that our branding is, matches all of those, you know, great facilities that we have in our district. And we want to make sure that we have the inclusion of some of our largest stakeholders and that's the students. They have really good thoughts, they have really good ideas and we, and in the draft messaging you'll see today, those have been incorporated into that initial messaging that you'll be providing feedback on tonight. And so with that feedback tonight is your opportunity to provide feedback on the draft messaging we'll show you. There's been several iterations to where it is today. So you are the first group to see the latest draft and that input will be incorporated into the thoughts of the other groups that will continue to gather feedback from. And then the feedback tonight and the feedback from those other groups could change some of the language you see tonight. And so with that, I'm going to introduce the CEEL PR staff that is helping guide us through this process. Cindy Linus, Janet Swichakowski and Kelly May from CEEL PR are joining us today and I'll allow them to introduce themselves.
Great, thanks Pepe very much. I'm Cindy Linus with CEEL. I am the founder and CEO and we're thrilled to be here. We'll talk some more. I'll let Janet Swichakowski, we're Asian, wave Janet. Swichakowski is our vice president and has extensive experience both on working in schools and communications as well as being within our communications, helping in the marketing and kindergarten enrollment and many kinds of marketing of schools that Pepe referenced earlier. We have Kelly May. Kelly May is our senior graphic designer and Kelly and Janet have been involved in all of the groups that we have been hearing from in your district. Kelly is in the process of also doing the design elements for the district. We will not be showing any or talking about any design. Now we get to bring those back to you. Our job really is to have listened, to have facilitated conversations. They have been excellent input. You have a lot to be proud about and it was very clear when we hadn't hit it on the mark, they spoke up and said, no, this is our district. We've been doing this for a lot of years, since 1988. We've been in business to help schools and education communicate their message. And we get asked a lot of times, why, what's the return on investment, right? You're sitting on the school board, why are we doing this? And I want to, Pepe, you mentioned a little bit earlier about enrollment. Things have changed, enrollment has changed, kids are having more choice and parents are having more choice right now. One of the things that we look at as families and people coming into a district or making those decisions is what is it? Do you have a, tell me your stories, right? I want to know what are my children going to learn? What's your assets that you bring to the table? What is, what makes you different from other area districts or other private schools? And we have to be succinct in that because there are so much information coming at us. And so one of the pieces that happens is if you think about how you learn about where you want to send your children or how you talk to neighbors and you get information, how many times do you have to hear that message come forward for you to go, oh, I get it? Now that's how you're different. One of the challenges with schools is that everybody starts to sound the same. And what we really want to do for South Washington County schools is how are you different? And we've been hearing that very loud and clear. And then how do we give you messages that again are memorable and that you can help tell stories in different lights and at different age groups, but they all come back to those key messages? And so that's what we're here to do tonight is to share with you those key messages and get feedback from you. And so with that, we'll go forward and what I can tell you is it's very fun when you start to see that people can describe the district and the schools. They all had lots of passion about the school that they go to and they could tell us more. They had a very difficult time talking about the district as a whole or sometimes even remembering our name. And so this is really to help unite you so that wherever I bring my child into school, there are expectations that I get that where I go to all of my schools throughout those ages. So with that, we'll go into what we looked at. Again, we're not going to talk about design today. The messaging and the pillars are absolutely critical to really setting the stage. And so we have gotten some excellent feedback. One of our directives that, and we completely agree, is to really amplify the student voice. How do we talk about our schools in a way that is student-friendly and also family-friendly and community-friendly? What we know is that when we get that message right, people get excited about it and they then can tell their stories about their children or about their neighbors or about what's making a difference in the district. So with that, I'm going to go through this presentation and then we're going to open it up for all kinds of questions and your inputs. The key messages are be seen, be heard, be bold. Trying to think about what is it we want to say about South Washington County schools as a district? And every group that we listened to, there were some very clear information about how the district is different and the culture that you're creating and the achievement and excellence that you want each student to have and each family to feel. So we made it into be seen, be heard and be bold. I'm going to go through each of these individually. You won't see that these, the little pieces that I'm going to do as descriptors about what each means, but we want to help you see it as a whole and think about the stories you would want to tell about the district. So let's talk about be seen. We go to be seen and we say, hmm, what does that mean? And, and we've got three items under there that we want to talk about. And one is bring your true self. Again, you're going to notice that we wanted to keep this direct and that it can relate to students, it can relate to staff, teachers, leadership, that we can see ourselves and what does that mean and what are those expectations? So bring your true self. We heard a lot about being authentic, being real. Just come to be who you are. The next one is believe in who you are. Believe in who you are as a teacher, as a student, as a family, but believe in who you are. And one of the things that we had in there a long time was sometimes it's other people believe in you more than you even believe in yourself. But ultimately, we want to believe in all students and the abilities of all students and the gifts that they are, they bring to the table. The last piece is find your voice. How do you find your voice? And these also are not, are actions you'll notice about can you find your voice? And is it our responsibility to help every student find their voice? Again, it's not one voice, that all sounds the same, but it is really how do you find your voice? So that's be seen. We go to the next part about be heard, be seen, be heard, be bold. So let's look at be heard. We, this was really fascinating to hear students' perception and how they talked about the importance of being able to be heard. They also talked about the importance of being seen. Speak your truth. So encouraging people to speak up and that doesn't mean if you're an introvert that you have to be an extrovert and be expected to speak it in a certain language, but justify and speak your truth at the table. The second piece is about empower yourself and others for good. How do we help others make the right choice, but how do we empower yourself to have the ability to be heard and to have those lifelong goals, lifelong values? And the last one is recognize other perspectives, that wherever we come from, whatever those lived experiences are that I bring to the table or I might have blinders on or have an experience, recognize others' perspectives. And it's more than celebrating, it's really recognizing and then sharing of that. That's be heard. So the third one is about be bold. I'd encourage you all to think, to go and look up bold after you come. We started here with be an example. There was a number of different things that came out and we've landed on be bold from all of these from excellent insight and perspectives to take a look at that. Bold really requires courage and it's about achieve your, achieve your excellence. And the idea that whatever your excellence is, whether your learning styles, whatever the styles, whether your abilities are, whether the gifts are, it's about achieve your excellence. You have a lot of academic excellence, you have a lot of athletic, music, arts. There's a lot of ways to achieve excellence, but it's also really understanding what, where we each have those gifts and those abilities to do that. The other piece for be bold is create the change you want to see. So we want change. We might not agree with how something is being done or we're being challenged academically to rethink, to reimagine. So create the change you want to see. And the last part about be bold is contribute to our world. I'm going to have them go and put all of them up. You will not see all of these words listed next to this. These are really ways to use examples and for us to talk about and share stories on each one. So you won't often see it all together, but I want you to be able to really look at it all together to help remember some of the stories that were shared in order for us as a group and your team to come together and say be seen, be heard, be bold. What I want to do is when we walk away, does this help you remember? When I would think about South Washington County schools, what am I, what stories am I going to tell? And most of us have to hear it seven, eight, nine, quite honestly, we're probably at 15 to 20 times before we remember something. So we want it to be memorable and we want it to be able to be bought in and understand that these are, these are what makes us different. This is what you're, you're creating as your culture and also what you have created as a, across the district. I'm going to stop there and talk, stop talking. I'll let you just be able to look at it for a minute and feel free to provide some thoughts and kind of an immediate reaction. Feel free, you can write in the chat if you would prefer to do that. I did see that there was one question on there, Pepe, about were there, are those the only three questions on the survey? You want to address that?
I believe that was a community member.
Okay.
And I believe they left.
Okay. So there was a whole survey that went out and those three questions were the ones that pertain to the, to the messaging and brand. Thoughts?
So this is the message then that would replace the lifelong, the passion for lifelong learning?
That ignite the passion? Yes, you won't, what you won't see is you probably, one of the things we looked at is ignite the passion up on the logo. You probably won't see anything up on the logo with this. This would be more what you might use in your headers. This would be more about what you would use as remembering, a way to talk about your stories and, but it probably won't go right underneath your district. And one of the reasons we're recommending not do that is because we really want to call out the name of your district and it gets pretty busy in addition to identifying where your district's at. But it will be a part, be seen, be heard, be bold will be something you will see across the district.
Okay, I, I, I'm a very open, honest person. I will tell you that from the beginning. I don't like it. I don't see it as, I don't see it as something that I could be out there and be like, yeah, be seen, be heard. I, it just doesn't, it doesn't resonate at all with me. I don't see it as something that people would remember. I, I just, it's very boring. It isn't, it isn't something that's going to strike me as, oh, I want to know more at all, so.
Thank you, Katie. We want you to be honest. That's what this opportunity is for.
I think one of the challenges I have is that it doesn't strike me as being, the, the smaller words on the side feel more school-related than the be seen, be heard, be bold. This is more, I think the challenge I have is that this doesn't seem specific to education or it doesn't seem like if I'm reading this outside of, without having, without having the name of the district there, it doesn't seem like this would be, I'm not sure that the first industry or category or whatever that I would think of would be education. And so that's where, that's one of the And so that's where, that's one of the struggles that I have, is I know that, you know, mission statements are supposed to be, you know, both short, and memorable, and specific. And I think it's the specific, the specificity that I struggle with.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I would kind of agree with that. I don't hate it. I do like the words on the side. I think they're, to kind of summarize more what each thing means. I think without having words where it actually talks about what each of the things mean, with just the be seen, be heard, behold, be bold, it almost seems more like a Nike ad than, you know, than like a school mission.
Okay. So, and just for clarification, this isn't your mission statement. Your mission statement will still stay, just for clarification, because I think that's really important.
So then, I think that's then one of the other challenges. So where, I think I'm having trouble understanding the circumstances in which this would be used versus the igniting a passion for, the replacement for igniting a passion for lifelong learning, or if they would be interchangeable.
So in the, I think, Pepe, I addressed it early on. We didn't come in here to change your mission statement. And your mission statement, as it stands now, has igniting and passion in the mission statement. I think the question is, do you wanna change your mission statement? Or do you wanna leave it like that, which you could still leave as your mission statement? This is really for, if you imagine on your district website, or on your website, it would be, it would have South Washington County Schools, your logo on there. And it would have be seen, be heard, be bold, would be in a font, and very much you can tell it's part of your district. It's a call like, whoa. The idea of it is really to have you ask questions, and ask those questions that would say, so how do you do that? How does this fit to your, how does this fit to the mission? The excellence, the, what does that mean? And you would, the stories that tell, and that go with that, would be pictures that showcase it, would be showing all of the activities and events that happen. It would be recognizing other perspectives. So you would show the various perspectives that are through, throughout your education. So those would all be the pillars that you use to tell the stories in multiple ways and multiple places. But just, yeah, go ahead, Louise.
I had a very different reaction to this. When I saw the be seen, be heard, I think our students are begging for that. See me, hear me. So that really resonated with me, the be seen, be heard. I think that's, you know, especially in times of COVID, we all wanna be seen, we all wanna be heard. And I think that's, from my take, that is really universal. The be bold does speak to excellence to me. It speaks of, you know, be not afraid to try something new. So I had a very different reaction than everyone else.
Interesting. Thank you.
So would this add to our actual, how we're advertising ourselves? So we're actually adding words instead of taking anything away from it? Because we still have our mission statement, we still have the Sol washco label or logo? So we would just be adding these rephrases to it?
Yeah, what we'll do, the next piece is we would bring back, actually, the visuals. So you can act, most of us are very visual, so you can see how it would do. I will tell you, we are committed to simplifying things, and making them clean, and easy to use and replicate. This be seen, be heard, be bold would be a part of your statement. Again, if you were, if you were using letterhead, you might put it on that letterhead, right? If you were using, the website's a great way to do that. You would see it on those webs, on the website with the, with the district. Again, your mission statement, and I think at the very beginning, Pepe, you, one of your core values, we're not changing core values. You have been very clear, the board is, and you've done a really good job of being clear about what your core values are. So those core values are still going to be showing up. How we talk about those core values would be a, be part of the be seen, be heard, be behold. So when you talk about collaborate, what does that look like? Again, so it's that action to set you apart as a district across the district.
So we can still look at changing our mission statement as well. We're adding it to make it seem like it's a little bit more inclusive.
Correct.
Add some diversity to it, or something to it, okay.
Correct. We, that's kind of outside of our scope of, I mean, that's your directives about the mission statement. But we also took and looked at that very closely as we were talking, and some feedback came back on the words. But yes, if you so choose to update your mission statement, they would tie together.
Hi.
Yeah, hi, Fana.
I like the words, be seen, be heard, be bold. I agree with Louise. Because be seen, be acknowledged, be accepted, include everyone. And be heard is the same thing. Be heard means acceptance and inclusion. And be bold, I think that says be proud of your achievements. I think this is wonderful. I really like it.
To piggyback on that, Pat, thank you for your input. One of the things that we did hear from students is a bit of that. They were very much about wanting to be heard, and they being real, and speaking their truth was really important to them. And it was brought up from the students, racial equity was top of the list. I love, one of the stories that they shared with us about, we're kind of competitive amongst schools, and even in our own school. But at least four of them talked about, but we don't think that's bad. We, it's not like it's a bad competitor, it makes us achieve just a little bit more. Other thoughts? So what I've heard is the, don't like it at all, doesn't speak to me yet. I like some of the pieces over to the right, for those who did not like it. A couple who very much liked it, it spoke to you. One of the things we encourage you to do is to sit with it as well, and see if it starts to resonate, or again, what would you want changed? Is it, that would be to your, what you believe needs to be top priority?
Yeah, I guess, so my initial reaction was not a positive one either. I, I agree, I can't remember who said it, but I think Simi, that it didn't seem very education-oriented. I understand, you know, what Louise and Pat have said about it, and then I can see it. But I guess my concern is, you know, my initial reaction would be everyone else's initial reaction. You know, like, the analogy to the Nike commercial, kind of, I mean, I can see that, it feels like that. But I mean, I see the other perspectives as well, as far as the students, and, I don't, maybe, I don't know, maybe it's the bold piece or something that is throwing me off. But I guess, yeah, I mean, personally, I would like to see what families feel about it. You know, what is their initial reaction? Because clearly, our families in our community really are the ones that we need. You know, families and students, obviously, and the community are the ones that we need to speak to. So if they see it, if they understand it, that's awesome. I mean, that's where we're going. But yeah, my initial reaction is I, I just didn't see how it would fit with our district, I guess.
Yeah, and to piggyback on Tracy's point, I think it would be important for us to understand how people who aren't affiliated with the district, or maybe who are prospective parents, or prospective community members feel about it. I think one of the challenges that we have is, of course, we know the district, and we know, we all have, you know, broad experience and deep experience with the district. And, you know, Pepe was saying, you know, this is sort of a competitive landscape. Does this resonate with the end-users, for lack of a better term, that we're trying to capture, right? How do we, you know, and so, I mean, because if it resonates with students, and it resonates with families, then, I mean, it's not really relevant, what I think, right? One thing that I would think, that I would wanna say is that if we do continue with something along this vein, I think we would wanna be really deliberate in how we do all of our other messaging around, you know, our mission statement and stuff. I think one of the disconnects I have is that this doesn't, this is a substantial departure from what we're doing now. And so I think maybe just seeing a more coherent or cohesive messaging may make it click better.
So you can see how the mission and this comes together?
I mean, I'm not reflexively, like, I don't love it, but that's, you know, as I said, that could be functionally meaningless. I do think that it's important that we, we find something that, I understand, and I think I can really get it behind the idea that, you know, these tenets could be the underpinnings of the stories that we tell, or, you know, every time we start to share something about South Washington County, is, does it reflect be seen, be heard, be bold, right? That I can get behind. But what I can't connect right now is just how it fits in with how, with our other messaging right now.
In particular, the mission.
Yeah.
Thinking more. I mean, I do, like I said, I like the words on the side, and I like if we would advertise it more as like what each of these things mean. But I really think it needs to resonate with the people that we're gonna be, you know, the families, and the students, and the teachers. And then also that, you know, it goes along with the mission statement. So I was just kind of jotting some things down. I mean, if we did something more like, the mission rise for districts to enable, inspire, you know, all our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence, and make positive contributions to our world, you know, something like that, where we're putting something in there that kind of goes along with that, then I can see it, you know, kind of branding together and coming together. But if we just have igniting a passion for learning, then I see this as being something different than just talking about learning.
Can I ask a question? Was there anything that was out of scope when we were, when we started talking about this? Like, in terms of naming, or branding, or anything like that? Or was there anything that was sort of, you couldn't, you know, for example, like, I know you can't change 833, right? But was there anything, or, because I'm just kind of curious, like, if there's, like, how flexible, or how much flexibility we have?
I mean, we have flexibility, is our understanding. One of the big things that we need that has come up is that when we did ask the story and the question about what do you call the district? You know, are you South Washington County Schools? Are you 833? Are you Sol washco? What are you? And it was, the people often didn't know, have an answer. And so in the data that came up, 833 was that low on the list in South Washington Counties, and Sol washco got the most information coming forward. Everybody knew what they called their school, right? And their high school, or their school that they were going to. But the district as a whole, that's where it came. And so one of our jobs is to bring back to you those options, to say, here's the recommendation, and here's what it looks like. So, because you brought, I think it was you who brought up the point. It's really important that what we call it, we at least call it the same thing. So that when we start referencing it, they don't get hung up on the name of who you are, but really, what the stories we want them to know about you. So our next, in fact, we're in that process now, is to be able to bring back how that would look in the name, and come together, and then how that also ties into the be seen, be heard, be bold. What wasn't within our scope was touching the mission.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I think it's, yeah, I think that's helpful for me. Thanks.
You bet.
One of the other things I like about this, I, students understand this language. Or even our youngs will understand this language. When we take, think about a mission statement and wanting that connection, I understand that. However, our students and families don't quote our mission statement. I can hear students or families repeating be seen, be heard, be bold. I think it's memorable. And I think that's something I can, I can see people having a conversation around that in the community.
I would like to, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I don't think Sharon has said anything about it. I'm curious if she had thoughts on it. Sharon, can you hear me? Maybe not. All right, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's okay. So I wanted, I guess what I would like to know is, is there a way that we can put this out there, not from our district? Some other way as a survey to see what people, what company, or what organization, or what people think of when they see be seen, be heard, be bold? I mean, with the context that Louise and, I mean, with all of that, yes, I can see that. But if you saw this on a billboard, be seen, be heard, be bold, is your first thought a school district? I know if we add in those extra words, that maybe, but like you stated, those extra words are not going to be a part of everything. I mean, we can't have all those words, that becomes too big. And I guess I was just expecting something a little more, and I don't know, flashy, that really draws you in. This is very, just dull. I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing to it. There's no, nothing that's gonna be like, again, like I said before, I really wanna know more. If I would call somebody and say, what do you think of this? I don't think they know that I was talking about the mission for this, or that, not the mission, but I don't think they know that I was talking about the school district's branding. I, yeah, even looking at it, it's really not growing on me, and it is not, I can say right now, it's not something I could get on board with.
Okay, and just for clarification, Katie, this probably, first of all, a Nike spends millions of dollars, right, in advertising, and that's how they get there. We look at doing things for public schools where it's about telling the stories, because that's really what comes around. The, you would not probably see this by itself unless you had information about the school with it, or you were showing stories about the students, or you were showing stories about the staff at the same time. So it's, you wouldn't necessarily be taking this out and putting it on a billboard without also giving the name of the school. The, go ahead. So just for clarification.
I was gonna say, with that, if we did something more like, at South Washington County, we want our students to be seen, be heard, behold, be bold, or something like that. I wonder if it's almost more just the bold letters with them being underlined, that's all in black? If it's just kind of more the, the way it is perceived as far as, I mean, are we, are we, is this for sure what we're looking at, how it would be written, or is that still up and open?
Yeah, that, thanks, Melinda, for asking that. This is not how it will necessarily be written. This is really for the messaging, and the pillars of messaging, and how we talk about the stories. So the next thing that you would see with this, or with whatever else we bring for the messaging, will then be in a design where you'll see what the logo would look like, and the school name, and you would see how this would be complimentary and be part of it. In fact, when we come back for that whole, how does it all fit together? We actually mock up the webpage. We actually do things and show how you would use it in different real settings, because most of us, that's how we can figure out if it resonates or not. So that would be the next, not necessarily that it's all caps, not necessarily that it's all bolded like it is.
That's helpful. That makes it seem much less like Nike commercial-ish.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And I'd like to add, when we talk about overall branding in general, especially when it comes to education, a world of opportunities, a premier education for all, even igniting a passion for lifelong learning, those things can apply to any school district in the state. So how do we differentiate ourselves? Because if we don't, you know, it would be like McDonald's saying, we sell hamburgers. So how do we, how do we have a personality as a school district that can be sellable? So how do we, how do we have a personality as a school district that can be sellable? And again, you know, all this messaging would go with all of our logos because as Cindy mentioned, that those pieces have to be continually pushed out there for people to recognize. So even though we may have new messaging, we also know that that's not going to catch on instantly when we start, first start using it. It does take that repetition. It requires my department communications to tell the stories that apply to all of these. And so when we talk about be seen, be heard, be bold, yes, we're talking about students, but we are also talking about staff. We want our staff to be able to be empowered by this. We want our students, and we certainly heard from them in their discussions about racial equity, of seeing themselves and we want to empower them. But also be bold, the board has already done that. As we talked about racial equity and passing the Board Equity Resolution, the board is already meeting this type of branding because being bold requires those tough decisions, passing a racial equity resolution, which we recently did. And so we want the board also to see themselves in this. And I think the bold, having been a departure from our initial messaging through our previous feedback with system leaders and staff and students, be bold really encapsulated us giving permission and having to take risks and having courage to go out there and do those tough decisions. So that's just something to think about as we differentiate ourselves as a school district from all the others that have similar messaging that really becomes window dressing.
Pepe, the other thing that I would add is I also, in one of the markups, one of the iterations, kind of underneath one of these, it talked about like your strategic plan goals. And so just thinking about what our goals are as a district, I could definitely see that there are opportunities to highlight through our goals, being seen, being heard, and being bold through those strategic goals. One thing that I like to do is I like to go through, like, from a student perspective, from a staff in the district, from a leader in the district, to a parent in the district. And I kind of pick and choose, so if it was the be seen, find your voice, opportunities in our districts where we can share the story around students finding their voice, some of our focus groups. Maybe it's ed camp for our teachers, where our teachers get to go to different sessions and find their voice. And right now, you know, I look at their words on a screen and some are bolded, some are underlined. But really what's going to make that come to life are the stories. And then you're going to add those lines to it. But I saw in one of the markups that definitely underneath this could be our strategic plan and how things tie to excellence and achievement, how we take time to empower others for good. It could be community service. It could be, you know, different avenues that we would take. So just another thing to think about, because we do have the whole strategic planning piece that has been put on a little bit of hold during the pandemic, but something we'll need to revisit.
Good, Julie. I will tell you that the leadership, the feedback we got was excellent. And one of the things that I was really struck about was the very openness that people were willing to take risks and they were going to talk and they gave their feedback. And what a great culture that you are creating by teaching that, both having it available for staff but also for students. And that was a clear value that was brought to the table in your district. Other last minute thoughts before we? I do think that also, to your point, one of the pieces we can do is test and bring it to folks who are not involved in the district right now, but perhaps are looking at the district now or in the future. And what kinds of questions do get asked? What does that, what does that then lead us to be able to answer the questions? Tell your story and talk about the uniqueness of your district and bring back that feedback.
I did have one question. Do other, so other districts have similar type messaging? Is there an example you can share or tell us about what some other school district has? Because I think one of the, one of the gaps for me is bridging where this, which is like a very, you know, and I get Pepe's point about you want to be unique within this space. It's hard for me. I understand this is kind of like a fundamental of storytelling and it's harder for me to get that, right? But it would be helpful to know kind of what other districts look like just so I can see what sort of standard messaging is in this space.
Yeah, and we could certainly share some from districts that have done some kind of more currently and recently. One of the things that has changed in this last five years, and particularly during COVID, is a whole change in how we have to talk and how we are communicating with with all the choices that are out there and amongst COVID. And so we would be happy to share with you some from other districts and can do that both out of, in Minnesota, but also in other parts of the country. That could be helpful.
Yeah, I think that would help me at least.
Yep. And I will say, I do feel like you're at a disadvantage not being able to see how it really plays out on what it will look like. But again, we can go to design and come back and show examples of how this would play out. So you can see, oh, it still doesn't resonate with me? Or, oh, now it makes more sense? In addition to the fact of going to folks who are not heavily engaged in your district and might be considering coming in and getting their perspective. Janet or Kelly, is there anything else you want to add or to share?
So this is Janet, and I think we've heard some really valuable feedback tonight. And so as I've been looking over my notes, certainly bringing out the learning is something that is resonating and making sure that it's going to be really actionable for families that are looking potentially at your district. I do think that the student voice and the one other aspect that we haven't talked a lot about is translated, making sure the messages are easily translated.
Thank you.
Those were two driving factors in keeping the messages very brief, active, and vibrant. The one thing we know coming out of COVID is that students are the agents of learning. It is not a passive activity. And so one of the driving things that we really heard coming from the groups, from the students, from the educators, was that active voice and wanting to be, coming forward in our messaging with an active voice. So that's one of the reasons that it is as simplified as it is. So that wherever the words are used with whatever story will come about, it's very active voice and it's empowering and speaking directly to students. As I think about the hopes and dreams we have for students today, they are going to be in a really different world than we grew up in. They are going to need to take ownership of their learning. They're going to need to learn those skills of being seen, being heard. And so that's when we heard that across all of our focus groups, particularly the be seen, be heard. People said, I want every student to know that in a large district, they are not just a number, that we see them, we value them, and they have a great opportunity here to become who they are. So that's really what drove. And then I would also add, on that last one, one of your students that we asked in the focus group and said, five years from now, when you've come back and we've kind of set this, this culture and tone in the district with this messaging and the stories that we're telling, five years from now, what do you want to look back on and say that you had an impact on? And he said, I want to be an example. I want every one of our students to be an example. We can bring change forward and that's what we're really doing. And that's really what evolved into this be bold, is that's really the student voice and what we tried to pick up out of that. So I do think it's very plain right now, the way it's presented. And that is intentional because we're not trying to get into design yet. We're just trying to get into what are the stories that will come out of this. But what I am hearing is that within that storytelling, the education and the learning and the teaching needs to come out a little bit more.
And it sounds like I'm hearing that we should probably, and that might be the district thing, but evaluating how that mission statement works with this. And maybe that's where the full education focus could be, if I'm hearing feedback correctly.
Absolutely.
I know that if we were going to move forward with this, personally, I think we need to change the mission statement. I just don't, it just doesn't match in any shape or form. I mean, I was just, you know, in looking at the descriptors, the first one in each one, you know, bring your true self, speak your truth, achieve your excellence. Now, if that had been what was over to the left, then I, I mean, it would have made more sense to me a little bit. But, I mean, I understand, you know, after hearing your explanations, why you chose kind of the words you did and said the descriptors. But yeah, I'm sure it would be, it would be nice just to see it played out, if you will. Like you said, sort of mock up, what does this actually look like?
Yeah, and I'll just add something really briefly, but just to add to what you said, Tracy, and what have many of, many other people have said, that it can be hard to visualize when, you know, these are just words on a screen right now. I haven't designed anything yet. This is just black and white, really basic stuff. And I am working on the design of the district, the refresh of the district, and I'm very excited to be able to share that with you. So I start, I think that, you know, once the design starts happening, everything will start to come to life and make sense. And we can put examples together to really explain out and like, present a more thought out examples and how really this will play out, how you guys can use it, so.
I think we need a jingle.
I bet you there's some good jingles that could come up.
So I think this has been incredibly helpful feedback. Pepe, do you want to wrap it up?
Yeah, board, we appreciate all of your feedback. We'll incorporate it in our discussions moving forward. We'll also have a conversation with Superintendent Nielsen on the process for the mission statement. And we'll continue to refine the messaging. We'll have additional focus groups as we start in, looking at the overall design and refinement of messaging in January. And then we hope to have kind of an overall look that you can respond to in February. So that's kind of the general timeline. I think it all depends on what our next challenge is. But that's the general timeline moving forward. So I don't know if there's any additional questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your candid feedback. Most appreciated. We will continue on the journey.
Yep, thank you. All right. So yeah, if there's nothing else, we're at 5.0, so we can adjourn. Have a good night, all.